The mayor and city council welcome you to the Peoria City Council meeting. As a courtesy to others, please silence all phones. If you would like to address an issue that is on the agenda, or if you would like to speak to the council regarding a non-agenda item, please complete a speaker request form, which can be found in the front lobby of the Peoria City Council chambers, or in the tray to the left of the speaker's podium. Please place the completed speaker request form in the second tray to the left of the speaker's podium labeled "Request to Speak." All speakers will have three minutes to complete their comments. A countdown clock is easily visible on the left side of the wall behind the city council dais. Only items listed on the agenda may be addressed by the council. Since items presented as part of a speaker's request have not been listed on the agenda, and due to the requirements of open meeting laws, the council will be unable to respond to items presented as part of the speaker's request. However, please be aware that your comments will be noted. The speaker's name will be called to speak at the appropriate time in the order that the forms were received. Thank you for your interest and participation in the Peoria City Council meeting.
The Peoria City Council meeting will now come to order. Please rise for a moment of quiet reflection, and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Hunt.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk will please call the roll.
Chairperson Carley.
Here.
Vice Chair Edwards.
Here.
Board Member Heath.
Here.
Board Member Finn.
Here.
Board Member Benzbacher.
Here.
Board Member Patena.
Here.
Board Member Hunt.
Here.
Board Member Dunn.
Here.
And Board Member Johnson.
Here.
Good evening, and welcome to the Peoria City Council meeting of June 15, 2021. We will begin with community facilities district board meetings. Per Arizona statutes, our board consists of the city council, as well as two additional board members, Jerry Johnson and Mike Heath, who are joining us on the dais, and they will be here for the first board meeting, so we thank you both for being here with us. And we will begin with the consent agenda for the Vistancia North Community Facilities District Board Meeting. Board members, are there any items to be removed from consent? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion a second.
We have a motion and a second. Board, please vote. Thank you, and the consent agenda passes unanimously. And thank you to Board Members Johnson and Heath. And there has been a change to our dais. Will the clerk please note the role reflecting that change? And we'll now move on to the consent agenda for the Vistancia Community Facilities District Board Meeting. Board members, are there any items to be removed from consent? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We will now move on to the first of two presentations. The first one is overview of federal assistance funds, and I will turn that over to Mr. Time.
Great, and thank you. I am going to ask that our Deputy City Manager Eric Strunk, and I believe we have our Neighborhood and Human Services Director Chris Hallett also providing an overview of various federal relief programs that we have that Peoria will be utilizing for our residents. They will also provide a summary of recommendations for the newly appropriated funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, and their potential use to address future COVID-related needs in the community. So with that, I'll pass it to Mr. Strunk.
Thank you, Mr. Time. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to reintroduce myself. I'm Eric Strunk, Deputy City Manager, and this is Chris Hallett, our Neighborhood and Human Services Director. I apologize. And what we're going to present to you tonight is just a real overview of the American Recovery Plan Act that has been promulgated and approved by the Congress. And as a result of this, there is quite a bit of money that is, has come our way and will come, will further come our way in the near future. What does that mean? That basically means that we have an opportunity to plug that in, program that for a variety of community-based initiatives that are still important to address due to our experiences through COVID. That's the genesis of ARPA. And what Mr. Hallett will do is we'll take you through kind of a general overview of that. In addition, he wanted to provide you with an update on how we've done so far with respect to what we received last year, which is our CARES Act money. Along with that, there's a couple of other community development block grant programs that we've received funding for that we'd like to reprioritize. You'll see that on the consent agenda tonight. But with that, just a very, very broad overview. Chris will tell you and share with you a little more of the detail about our ARPA funds.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, happy to be here to give an update on these funds that we've been grazed by the federal government in order to spend on the Peoria community. I do apologize, I had a PowerPoint that I forgot to push send, so I'm going to have to do more of a verbal update, so please bear with me, and I will get you the information later for you to observe. But as Eric mentioned, there's five consent agenda items on here, all tied together. And one of the things we talked about last time I was here for the ARPA is we wanted to look at all the funds that were coming out to make sure the opportunities that came up, we were leveraging the right money for the right type of service that we were looking to provide. So since then, we, so I'll jump into the first item, 14C, is the American Rescue Plan Act. So if you remember, Peoria's been awarded almost $21 million, the first half of which we received last month, so we already have 10.3 million in our coffers. And so what item 14C presents to you, very similar to what we did with the CARES Act, is in categories that you're very familiar with. The human and social services, so we want to put money, buckets of money for allocation purposes to go out to the community. 2.35 million for human and social services, 1.49 million for healthy work environment, and 1.16 million for small business assistance. Now, those three categories all fit under the Act as far as economic impact to COVID expenses. So these will all serve our community, can serve households, businesses, industries that were negatively impacted by the pandemic. So we look to do RFPs for each of these buckets of money out to, and ideally, we'd find a nonprofit that was themselves impacted by it, so we can get kind of a two-for-one benefit, helping a nonprofit to help deliver these funds, so their application and such will demonstrate that they know how to do documentation of such an impact. So we're really optimistic about getting these funds to those businesses, nonprofits, and households that are mostly impacted. We also have a set aside for infrastructure in the broadband category. That's very specific, and we're very happy to do it. All four of these categories, there's a presumed eligibility when it's in a HUD-defined qualified census tract. And Peoria does have upwards of 30 different census tracts that we can target, so if they live there or operate business there, we can really assist them, either the household or the business directly, or any organization that's working in there, or any impacted industry, so for the small business assistance. So we're very optimistic for those five, that totals $5 million of the 10 million. Now, the remainder of the funds is being just set aside for revenue loss and fiscal deficit that's allowable by that. I think to date, we're just shy of $5 million. It's very prescribed in a formulaic in the Act, and we're almost to $5 million, but it's monthly you calculate this. So there'll be more deficits to be able to recover in accordance with that formula in the Act. Examples of the health and human services, just to conjure up some ideas, obviously any impact or relation to the, either economic or the pandemic itself, so we can help with vaccines. Community paramedicine in particular is an area we're going to be providing funds to. Continuation of utility assistance, as we've been doing, and you'll hear more about our other funds. Peoria Promise scholarships, and those negatively and desperately impacted for some scholarship opportunities. And then we also have opportunities to help the homeless and other populations that are desperate in need of some assistance. The healthy work environment will pertain to public buildings and spaces for sanitation, filtration, any number of things that are going to help a safe environment for our public when they interact with government business. Again, small business will be very similar to what we did with the CARES Act. It could be job training and fairs. Technical and financial assistance in particular, there's going to be ways we're going to do that, either individually as a business, or an impacted industry such as tourism, hospitality, that have been noted in the Act. And then the broadband, again, is going to be really looking at those qualified census tracts that generally have no broadband connectivity, wireless connectivity, or very low. And the Act specifically calls to raise their uploads and downloads to 100 megabits per second. Many of these have zero or maybe 25 megabit upload, so it's definitely going to make an impact, the idea being they want to be able to support those disparate communities that are unserved or underserved, and they have little to no connectivity to be able to work from home and school from home, as we saw through this pandemic.
Chris, if I could, real quickly, and on that broadband piece, we won't be doing this, we will not be using our IT department, nor will the city do it. We intend to partner with internet service providers in the community to help us establish either a scholarship, a voucher-type program, but we're looking forward to doing that. And Chris has had an opportunity to touch base with a couple of them. They're very aware of it. They've actually inquired to us about how can they help make this work in our community. So we really think that's going to be a good fit. It's a little different for the city, and that's why I wanted to highlight that, but we will be working with our internet service providers on that.
So again, that item's on 14C consent today. Any questions on the American Recovery Plan Act?
We're very fortunate to have received that amount, and your work is clearly cut out for you. Chris, I know you forgot to send, touch send, but could you send it to us?
Absolutely.
Your PowerPoint, because I'd like to see it in print.
Yes.
And thank you for all you've done and all you're going to do.
Thank you.
And businesses, then we have to report back on how it was spent?
Yes, Mayor, Council, actually, the first reporting period is August. It's three months after we received the funds in May, and every quarter after that. So we're still looking to get some guidance on the reporting. We just received some FAQs in June, very, very helpful to help narrow some of the questions and define it, but you're absolutely right. It is very narrowly defined. It's very commensurate with CARES, but if you remember, our CARES funds were a little scrub, so we had a little more flexibility. These are direct funded to us, straight from Treasury, so there's going to be strict guidelines for documentation and reporting.
Well, I'm really pleased that we got it quickly this time, much quicker than the last time, and that we can get this out to the community right away. So thanks for all you do. We appreciate it.
I bet. Items, 15C is the CARES Act funds, and 16C, our community development block grant coronavirus funds, both of which predominantly are being used for utility rent and mortgage assistance, which we tend to report out weekly and monthly, so hopefully you've seen how well those funds have been going to serve Peoria businesses and households in need. Again, we'll have more funds to go towards that. We do have an amendment on the CARES Act. We want to, it was a portion between utility assistance and rent and mortgage, and we exhausted all the rent and mortgage side, so what we want to do is amend the contract with Foundation for Senior Living, who's administering it, to allow these funds to be used for either or, in order to best meet the needs of our community. So that will free that up to be spent. And then on the CDBG CV funds, we're allocating another $95,000 towards FASAL for, of unspent and returned money, for more mortgage, rent, and utility assistance, and then $27,000 too deep within for some PPE storage and rent assistance of their own. Any questions on those two items? Great. Item 17C is intergovernmental agreement on a fixed route service, and great news there. There's funds coming in. Now, these aren't directly to ours, but they're available through other parts of ARPA and the, let me see, Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, going through the Valley Metro. So we're able to say between those two allocations, we're going to reduce our fixed route contract from 1.5 million, it'll be down to just under $300,000. So that's a tremendous assistance for this next year, so there's an amendment to the IGA to allow for that for this coming year.
I bet that passes.
And I have no questions on that. The last item, 18C, Department Economic Security Child Care Grant, we have applied for and expect to receive, so we're coming for authorization to accept and disperse these funds, up to $60,000, in order for our childcare workforce retention and recruitment. It's based on $75 per child that we've already had in our system, and it comes out of the state CARES Fund for Child Care and Development. So once we receive that, we'll work very closely with our partners at DES, as well as Human Resources here, on best ways to be able to distribute those funds. That concludes it.
Councilmember Hunt?
Chris, going back to 15 and 16C, this is not really directed so much at you as it is to folks out there. But you, you need to, folks out there, if you have a need, you need to call the city, and you'll be directed to Chris's office where you will receive help. In this extreme heat that we're already experiencing, we don't want anyone to suffer, much less die, in their home because they couldn't pay a utility bill, or for that matter, because their cooler or their air conditioner was broken. Please, we've got this money here now, but we may not know that you're out there. So help, Chris, help you by calling in and saying it. The same with the, well, that just goes for both, the CARES Act funding and the developmental block grant funding. If you have a need, if you can't pay your water bill, if you can't pay your mortgage, don't feel like you're alone. You have a great city here, and you have money that's been allocated to us for you. So call the city and get some help.
Thank you.
Mayor, yeah, I think that concludes the presentation, so if you have any questions, great. Otherwise, those items will appear on your consent agenda for consideration this evening.
Okay, good. I think we're, I think we've asked everything we need to, and so thank you for that information.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The second presentation on our agenda tonight is proclamation recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month. And this year's theme is Our Park and Recreation Story. So I just want to say a few words. Our local parks are often the first experiences that people have in nature, our introduction to our favorite outdoor hobby, or possibly sports activity that we're going to be participating in for the rest of our lives. These are places to gather, places for family, places to celebrate special moments, and places to find some peace and quiet, and so much more. So rather than reading tonight's proclamation, which is available on our website, we are going to watch a video, so take a look at the screen and hear from some of our residents about what parks mean to them.
Well, the park is very well landscaped, and the facilities are first-rate. The area with the grass, it really is nice.
I was so excited for the construction as I was driving by, and the renovations surpassed my expectations. It's a beautiful park, and I love all the new features.
It's a nice park. I like the pond. I like all the amenities around, the dog park, so this is, this is just a really nice park.
Most of the time, I've been coming for bringing my grandsons to play in the playground, or a lot of days I come with them fishing.
It's nice to be able to come out here and fish. I caught one not too long ago.
Being able to find a park where it's something that she can play on, it's not all big stuff. It's shaded, so we can come out here and play instead of being stuck inside all summer.
So I've been coming to Rio Vista Park for about a year now. The kids enjoy it. They like the splash pad. It's really pretty.
This park has great bike trails. I liked the little splash park, because I used to bring my first daughter here, and now I'm bringing my second daughter here.
Well, I like the splash pad. I do like the baseball fields. It's a good community here.
I love the big open spaces and the little lake, and this playground is amazing.
Courts are wonderful. Very nice. There's a lot of room between the courts.
And we just can't be happier. Thank you, Peoria.
So now, I would like to welcome one of the people who is responsible for all those great stories, John Sefton, our Parks and Recreation Director.
Mayor, thank you. Councilmembers, thank you. Regardless of the month, your support for the special places, the special programs, the special projects, and the special activities, it's truly appreciated, though folks say it, and they don't have to have a microphone in their hand. It happens all the time. We know that those types of amenities are appreciated here in Peoria. Across the country, and since 1985, Americans have celebrated July as the National Parks and Recreation Month. And as you mentioned, Mayor Carlet, the theme this year is Our Park and Recreation Story. And we have the opportunity to highlight the stories of how Peoria is stronger, more vibrant, more resilient because of our Parks, Recreation, community-centric facilities and amenities. Joining us tonight, and in the audience, are Parks, Recreation, and Community Facility Boards members, Jerry Johnson and Katrina Romine. And from our leadership team, I have Blake Engler and Nathaniel Washburn, and all the others are watching online, in a good, deserved break. I do wish to commend, recognize, and express my pride in the over 130 full-time staff and the 220 part-time employees, who are stewards to our trails and our open space, who are caretakers of our parks and neighborhood amenities, who are leaders in our community's leisure pursuits. From sports, you mentioned these, Mayor, from sports, whether it's amateur, youth, or professional sports here in Peoria, to our aquatics and our learn-to-swim teams, to fitness and outdoor exercise, all of the folks that bring that together. Even our librarians are getting into the action, promoting literacy at our pools, our parks, and our rec centers. While Parks and Recreation are in the title of our department, I certainly want to recognize the important connections, support, and services that members of the other departments, Neighborhood and Human Services, Engineering, Planning, Public Works, Public Safety, Office of Communications, great video by the way, Budget and Finance, Human Resources, the Clerk's Office, City Manager's Office, you know what, we should just name every department Parks and Recreation in July. But we really want to recognize all of the professionals. Every department has a vital role in providing and ensuring that Peoria receives superior public services, and that is Parks and Recreation. Thank you for the community, thank you for the opportunity, thank you for the community, and most importantly, this proclamation recognizing July 2021 as Parks and Recreation Month. Thank you.
Thank you. It's so nice to see how many people love our parks. They sure look beautiful. All right, we will now move on to the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, or have been previously reviewed by the city council, and will be enacted by one motion unless a council member requests an item be removed and considered in the normal sequence on the agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes items that require a public hearing. If there's any member of the public present who wants to address an item on the consent agenda that is a public hearing, please fill out a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the podium. Council, are there any items to be removed from consent?
Yes, I have some.
Which item?
I have 19C, 22C, 23C, 26C, 27C, 28C, and 34C.
That is a lot of items to be removed from consent. Council, is there a motion on the consent agenda with the exception of items 19, 22, 23, 26, 27, 28, and 34? And we have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. And those pass unanimously. So we will begin with item 19C. Councilmember, what is your preference? Councilmember?
Pardon?
We've removed item 19C, and now we are there. What would you like?
Sure. So I, the 19C is Contract Capital Improvement Projects Pavement Management Program Rehabilitation and Pavement Preservation Award Contract, in the total of $1,451,262.
Right.
To, via Sun Corporation, and the job contract number is A C O N 01617. My question is, why is the same job order for a higher amount listed on consent agenda item 27C? That's the first part of the question. Where is the work being performed? Has this ever been before council to vote on, or was it considered or issued through an RFP or an IGA? Those are the first, and I, yeah, I'll start with that.
Okay, Mr. Time?
Great. Well, with us, we have Jay Davies, who is our interim Public Works Director, and we'll have some other assistants as needed to make sure that we address the council members' questions. There would be no intergovernmental agreement in a circumstance like this. We can talk a bit about the procurement process that we do have, and Via Sun is one of the contractors that we have used, from a series of contractors to support us here throughout the city on pavement management. Pavement management, very important to the city, a very high priority. Fortunately, we have a great relationship with a series of different contractors to provide this, but I can pass to Mr. Davies if you have any other additional information or to address the councilmember's questions.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Time. Councilmember Dunn, Mayor and Council, these two projects are different, although they are in similar areas. They are in the Pine District, in the southeast, southeast corner of the city. They are, the nature of the contract is that these contractors come off of the JOC, or the Job Order Contract, so they're predetermined. They bid on a, on a regular basis, and then they're on a job order contract basis, and we put the projects out to the folks. Right now, we have two contractors who are on that list. The same contractor has bid for both of these. The other contractor, which is Nesbit, they are involved in a lot of larger projects in other cities that are offering them, again, much larger jobs at this time. We do anticipate having some projects that this other contractor will take on in fiscal year '22 here coming up.
So am I to understand that both of these contracts are all in the Pine District, the one for $1,451,000? And then on 27C, the same, same contractor, it was listed on the consent agenda as the same contractor, the same contract number, and then the second award was for $1,521,000. So are you telling me that upwards of $3 million in pavement management by this company is all in the Pine District?
Give me a moment to pause on that. I'm looking at the locations. They are both in the area of 75th Avenue and Peoria.
So both of them are 75th Avenue in Peoria, which is the Acacia District?
Yeah, and I apologize, I had the wrong district. You're correct. But they are both in the vicinity of 75th and Peoria.
This would be consistent with the areas that we had identified in the budget process, where we had identified the planned pavement management programs going forward for fiscal year '22, and then what we had done in '21. If you would like, we can get information for you on where those specific items were. We don't look at it specifically within a district. What we do is specifically go through that, as we discussed, the pavement condition index, looking at what would be the most optimal way to utilize our dollars, and then going through the appropriate competitive process, consistent with state law.
So just to clarify, 19C and 27C are the full amount, which is upwards of $3 million, is in the Acacia District. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So we can erase 27C and 19C off? That answers my questions on this?
Okay, thank you.
22C, Contract Amendment B and F Contracting, Inc., for trunk sewer rehabilitation. I'd like, if you can, explain like, if you can, explain where the money will be spent. It looks like it's over a million here. What part of Peoria has been, it's a water delivery system. Should I wait? Let you get set up.
Hi, Mayor, Counsel. We have Adina Lund, our Development and Engineering Director, can provide a response for the council member.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Counsel member Dunn, you should wait between, and I will announce that, so that they have time to get ready.
That's why I asked. Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. The trunk sewer rehab program, we hire somebody to analyze our sewer lines throughout the city, and we give them specific grades based on the actual appearance of the sewer lines. They're all videoed, and then we do a ranking on them, and we prioritize the projects. So this project that we are currently working on is along the New River Trail section of sewer line. It is also a contract that is to one of our JOCs. And the way our job order contracting works is while we have a job order contractor, they go out to various contractors and subcontractors. They have to get multiple prices, and they have to go with the reasonable price. So it isn't just one person actually bidding it. They're the general contractor, but they're getting prices from multiple people. And then we go through those contracts and look and observe that they collected enough prices and that they're reasonably priced.
So the reason why I ask this is, you know, I know it's Consent Agenda, but when we're looking at over a million dollars on one part of it and $916,000, it's a lot to be, you know, put on a Consent Agenda without having some type of presentation. The other thing is, is when I first got onto council, I had brought up to staff, executive staff, about the condition in the Pine District of water delivery system pipes and being made from asbestos piping, and our roads continually sinking and those cracking. So because of the amounts of money that we're spending, I also want to know that we're looking at some of these water delivery systems too, because they haven't been replaced in over, you know, 25 or so years. And so I would just like to state up here for the record that I know the South, again, has a lot of these water delivery systems that are asbestos pipes, and they need to be looked at as well.
Right, understood. The sewer has been our top priority, because as sewer lines break, if we get any sewer spill, that is very detrimental to the community. So we have had a large focus on sewer lines. Water lines, we do look at the various age and materials of the pipes, and we do prioritize those projects. And also, our Utilities Department is looking at locations where we have multiple breaks and addressing those to reduce the maintenance. So we do have continuous programs for both of those.
Thank you, Adina.
You're welcome.
Okay. Item 23C. Contract Amendment, City Manager, Counsel member Dunn?
Who am I addressing this to?
Mayor and members of the councils. So my understanding is that these items were pulled from the Consent Agenda, so I believe we have to take a separate vote on each item. So the items that we've discussed thus far need to be approved.
All right, so we're going to back up.
Yes, thank you.
And we are going to vote on item 19C. Thank you, Ms. Hickman. Item 19C is Contract Capital Improvement Projects Pavement Management Program Rehabilitation and Pavement Preservation. Is there a motion?
Assume. Second.
Counsel, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Item 22C. Contract Amendment B and F Contracting, Inc., trunk sewer rehabilitation. Do I have a motion?
Assume. Second.
We have a motion to second. Please vote. And it passes unanimously. Item 27. Expenditure Authority Capital Improvement Projects Pavement Management Program Rehabilitation and Pavement Preservation. Is there a motion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion to second. Please vote. And it passes unanimously. Are we up to speed? Yes, we are. Okay, we will move on to item 23. 23C is Contract Amendment, City Manager. Ms. Dunn?
I'm waiting for somebody to address. Is there anybody to address?
There is no one.
The body is a whole.
No, it's just...
I didn't know if it would be the attorney. 23C, Contract Amendment, City Manager, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Amendment to the Terms and Conditions of Employment Agreement with the City Manager. Can I have somebody let me know the total spending or the amount of this contract renewal, what the raise and compensation package, total comp salary, bonuses, vacations, what the annual cost will be to the city?
Okay, obviously, we don't have somebody from staff who is in charge of this. Is it in your, is it in your packet?
Well, I know what was discussed in the executive session.
Right, but that's not an issue. What, is it in your packet? I mean, if you want to read it out loud, is that what your goal is here?
No, that's not my goal.
What is your goal?
The goal is, as far as I'm aware, it's a percentage of an increase that we've given so far. Am I allowed to say that percentage, Vanessa?
So I would just make sure to refer to what is in the public record. So if there's an attachment to the agenda, but what was discussed in executive session remains confidential. So if you're acting on something this evening that's in your packet, that's something that you can discuss with what's actually listed in what's in your packet.
So the, I guess my point is, the COLA for employees that we're giving raises to with the city is a 1.5%. I do have a little bit of concern with some of the amount of raise that we're giving here. And the reason why is because, you know, we have police and fire that are not getting the same type of compensation increases. I do know that our city manager did skip a year of not getting a raise. So, but at a 1.5 COLA, you know, that's 3%. There's quite a bit over and above that. And so my point is, that I'm making, is that I think the people that keep us safe, and we're having a hard time keeping police right now. We don't have enough. That's one of, public health and safety is council's number one priority, or one of the main priorities. We don't have the amount of police officers that we should have. And we are losing people to other cities. So again, at a COLA, cost of living adjustment at 1.5, the percentage going to our city manager, and no judgment on job one way or the other. All I'm saying is, it's very high compared to what we're paying our public health and safety, and I think we also need to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, so I would like to say, just in the interest of factual information, our police and fire are represented employees. They have contracts based on their union. They have received much more than 1.5% in increases, and they did choose their contract. And it's, they are very well represented, as a matter of fact. And I also, you know, just for bragging rights, would like to say that we are fully staffed in our officers' rank and files, which is something that a lot of cities are not right now because of, you know, all of the issues with police that we know nationwide. So we're very proud of that. And our turnover rate, as a matter of fact, is half of the turnover rate, that is the national turnover rate for employers and employees across the nation right now. So the city of Peoria is, you know, takes good care of its employees, and the turnover rate is very low, and our police is fully staffed. So I do just want to, you know, make sure that we know those as facts. Counsel, are there any comments? Yes, council member Finn?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to put anybody on the spot here to come down and present information if they're not prepared, but I would like to do a follow-up at some point on what other groups received in merit increase. Because I do the quick math here, and it just seems like it's, at 1.5%, it's a 2% merit increase. And if I remember correctly, I've slept a few times since we had these discussions, but I believe 3.5% per year, since we skipped a year, is lower than what other increases were. But I don't want to put anybody on the spot unless they feel compelled to jump into the fire pit here, but I would like to have a follow-up on it and take a look at it, because I believe this is absolutely in line. And I will also just say, while I have the microphone, I think the city has done a phenomenal job of developing a strategic and cogent compensation plan where we try to be in a certain percentile of, for lack of a better term, competition, because we're all competing for the same employees in the market, whether it's a city manager, whether it's police officers, it's fire. We have a cogent strategic plan to do that. And as I look out into this audience and see what this city has developed and the staff out here, I think we've done a really good job competing and bringing in the best of the best. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
Leave it at that.
Okay. If there are no other comments, then we will vote on item 23C.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to second. Please vote. And it passes six to one. All right, we will now move on to item 26. Budget Amendment, Legal Services and Administrative Hearing Costs. Ms. Dunn?
So on item 26C, Budget Amendment for Legal Services and Administrative Hearing Costs, the possible budget amendment of $365,000 from the Risk Fund Contingency account to pay for the judgment issued against the city for the case the city lost in Arizona Appeals Court case, Schreier's ETLAL versus Carlat. I would like to know, are these fees to pay for the council's opposing attorney fees?
I guess it was grain four. So, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. If you'd like, I do have a few slides if they're able to queue it up, or I can simply respond to questions.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Just happened to have a presentation, huh?
Okay. Just wanted to be ready, because I knew that this may be a discussion item. So, and council member Dunn, I will certainly get to your question as part of these slides. So our budget amendment request this evening for the city attorney's office is largely a result of the judgment and associated legal costs from the lawsuit that was filed against the city by the Goldwater Institute in October of 2016, based on gift clause claims. There were two economic development agreements at issue with Huntington University and Arrowhead Equities LLC, again, entered into in the 2015, 2016 timeframe. So the city prevailed at the trial court level in Maricopa County Superior Court, where the court completely adopted the city's arguments. Goldwater then appealed. There were multiple amicus briefs filed in support of the city of Peoria, and the Arizona Court of Appeals then affirmed the lower court's ruling in that the consideration was adequate and the agreement served a public purpose. Again, Goldwater appealed. So after two successful decisions by, again, the Superior Court and the Court of Appeals, on February 8, 2021, unfortunately, the Arizona Supreme Court reversed the Arizona Court of Appeals decision and held that the agreements violated the gift clause under the way the Supreme Court was looking at the case. Goldwater, representing the taxpayers, then requested attorney's fees, and Peoria filed an objection. Ultimately, the Arizona Supreme Court awarded a judgment in the amount of $101,162.70 in fees and costs at the Supreme Court level. So that award was to the Goldwater Institute because they were the prevailing party. The case was then sent back to the Maricopa County Superior Court, where there was a judgment entered in the amount on the screen for over $149,000 for attorney's fees and costs at the Superior Court level and Court of Appeals level. So that included all the discovery, all the pleadings, all the depositions. And so that amount was, you know, we reviewed all their application for attorney's fees, and that amount was found by the court to be consistent with an adequate award for attorney's fees to Goldwater. So with that, you have the request in front of you. Again, it is to pay a judgment entered by the court against the city based on the finding by the Arizona Supreme Court. We also had some associated legal costs, and then $50,000 for administrative hearing costs over the course of the year to represent the city's interests. So I'm happy to answer any further questions. Questions?
Yes. So are, so I understand these, I always explained that this was legal when, I wasn't on council then, but when it was voted for, it was legal, and then now it's technically not. Is that correct?
Mayor, members of the council, that is the type of thing I would prefer to convene into executive session to discuss. However, if the council would like me to give legal advice on the public record, then I could move forward. But that is legal advice from your city attorney, and I would prefer not to answer that question.
Thank you. That is, would you like my opinion on that?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. I'm happy to give it. We did enter into something that was legal at the time. Goldwater has an agenda. I am not ashamed to say that Goldwater has an agenda. Their goal has always been to change the gift clause, to expand the gift clause, and they were able to take this case and do so. So we entered into something that was perfectly legal at the time. It was, we, under the advice of our attorney at the time, and we entered into something that obviously the two lower courts also agreed was legal at the time. Goldwater was, Goldwater, once they got to the Superior Court, the Vice President of Litigation used to work at the Goldwater Institute, now is a member of the Superior Court. And so, the Supreme Court, excuse me, and so, you know, they were, they were trying to get, work their way up to that court, and they were successful in doing it by appealing every single time. And when they got there, they knew what that ruling was going to be. And they were right. And so now that they have expanded the gift clause, they will be able to sue many more people, many more cities, many more entities, many more economic development deals will fall by the wayside, all at, I believe, the expense of the state of Arizona and our economic development and commerce as we try to compete with other states. It's shameful. And I know that you're not able to say any of that, but I certainly can. And I think that it's wrong, what they are doing, under the guise of watching out for our taxpayers.
So are tenant improvements, all this also the same as a gift clause? What's mentioned here as a gift clause? If we extend tenant improvement money to an entity, is that the same as what is being done here?
So these agreements were entered into with Huntington and Arrowhead for the purpose of establishing a university in the city of Peoria and allowing it to locate here. And, you know, what was done was assistance to Arrowhead as well as to Huntington University. So there were some tenant improvements that were part of the underlying payments.
The reason I'm asking this question is, I'm aware of some other businesses that we've given tenant improvement money to. Could these potentially take us to court as well? Could these potentially take us to court as well?
I'm sorry, Mayor, members of the council, that's hypothetical and I don't know how to answer that question. It's, I don't know.
I'll be more direct.
Thank you.
We gave approximately $600,000 to Modern Round and they're no longer, their doors are closed. It was a tenant improvement. Would this be the same type of funding or money, you know, is this the same type of situation?
Mayor, members of the council, I don't think you want me to answer that question on the public record. So I can happily give you legal advice in executive session, but I'm not in a position to give legal advice in this forum.
Councilmember Dunn, can you keep your questions to the agenda item, please?
I'm just trying to figure out, again, not a lot of this has been explained, so I'm asking, so. Okay, so I guess we need to move to vote on that one.
Thank you.
All right, so we are on item 26C. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. And so we will move on to item 28, fiscal year 2021, second and third quarter budget amendments and carryovers.
So Mayor, Council, we have Barry Halgar, Assistant Finance Director, that is here to assist. Just a reminder, with regard to the budget amendments that you see, these quarterly budget amendments have no financial impact. They are usually adjusting different aspects to it that is really related to budget authority. So with that, we will address any questions that you have.
Thank you. Do you have some specific questions?
So 28C, fiscal year 2021, second and third quarter budget amendments and carryovers. Can you please define and explain what these carryovers are and the amounts?
Yes. Mayor and council, the carryovers would be on the backup information. I'll get to, so there were two of them, it looks like, for operating carryovers. One was in the Public Works Department. They were, didn't quite finish the office space reorganization that they had intended in FY '20. This is carrying over the money so they can complete the project. The second item was, it was an IGA with United Health. They had some unspent budget from FY '20, and then in order to spend it in '21, we have to bring the budget into the new budget for FY '21. And so this item was approved by council in September 3rd of 2019 for the '20 budget. Wasn't quite spent completely, and so we carried over $106,000 to be spent.
Thank you. That satisfies what I asked.
Is there anything else?
The last one, 34C.
Well, I mean, on this one.
But not on that one.
Okay, so thank you for reading this off of our council packet. Council, is there a motion on item 28C?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote. And it passes unanimously. All right, item 34, Final Platte, Peoria Sports Complex, 83rd Avenue and Paradise Lane. Ms. Dunn, what is your question?
So 34C, Final Platte, Peoria Sports Complex, 83rd Avenue and Paradise Lane, discussion and possible action to approve a final platte of Peoria Sports Complex. So I am, as I stated, extremely concerned with the approval of this, as the Goldwater Institute has already made a records request. And with hindsight, you know, of the past case, it does cause me concern. It also is, in my opinion, that it's a direct conflict of interest, as we have a council member who is the CEO of the Cactus League, and I believe voting for funding or final plattes, removing or changing current parking, all cases to do with the P-83 Sports Complex, and her employer, who directly benefits from funding, should recuse herself. Can I please have our attorney weigh in on this?
Well, on this matter, I see a final platte for Peoria Sports Complex, 83rd Avenue and Paradise Lane, and I am curious to hear which project this actually applies to.
Right, I'm happy to do that. So we have Adina Lund, our development engineer, that can provide an overview of this final platte.
Mayor and council, this has actually been in the works for the last two years. This addresses all of the city-owned parcels in that area, so that includes where the Arizona Broadway Theater is, where we have Salty Señoritas, there's a variety of different parcels that we own in the area. When we have city-owned parcels back historically, we did not dedicate separate right-of-ways and easements for utility companies to come in and do improvements, and we have been cleaning those up. So we're trying to identify all the locations where we have water lines, electrical lines. We had an old piece of right-of-way that went through the parking lot, and we've had utility companies wanting to come in and put monopoles in the middle of the parking lot. And so by removing the right-of-way from the parking lot, it makes it so they cannot come in and pursue those types of activities. So this was actually just a cleanup to identify the different parcels that exist and the existing easements that are on those parcels. So this was not related to the Stadium Point project. It started before then.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, members of the council, in response to the conflict of interest question, conflict of interest, it is on the member of this body to declare a potential conflict. And those, the potential conflict is listed in the council policies of what that is, and based on what I've heard this evening, I don't see a conflict of interest that is existing. But I understand that it would certainly be on the council member to declare a conflict if one existed.
Councilmember Vinsbacher?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I, you know, there's no conflict of interest on this agenda item whatsoever, but I can't think of an instance when there would be, as far as my role with the Cactus League, but I am 10 steps ahead of you, Councilmember Dunn. If, in fact, there were, I wouldn't wait to get to this point to determine that, and I would absolutely recuse myself if there were.
That's good to know. Thanks, Bridgette.
Is there a motion on item 34C?
Second.
Motion and a second, council, please vote. Do you need everyone to vote again? Okay, it passes with the exception of Councilmember Dunn. All right, we will now move on to the regular agenda, which is item 37R. Item 37R is the assignment in Second Amendment to amended and restated development agreement for Vistancia. Mr. Tyne.
Great, thank you, Mayor and council. And we have Katie Gregory, our deputy city manager, that will present an amendment for your consideration on the restated development agreement on this parcel. And then I'll pass it to Ms. Gregory.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm here to present this evening on an agenda item, I'm going to push this, there we go, which is the assignment of and the Second Amendment to the amended and restated Vistancia Development Agreement. That's a mouthful, I know. As you know, the city has been working with the Vistancia development for almost, well, 20 years now. In 2001, we entered into an agreement, which was both an annexation and a development agreement, that set the tone for a development that was coming into the city that was 11 and a half, or almost 11 and a half square miles and over 7,000 gross acres. So huge development coming in, and of course, with all of that and a master plan community, lots of entitlements and other obligations and requirements, hence the reason for needing a development agreement to include all of that. In 2012, as you can imagine, as time goes on with any major development like this, 17,000 homes was reduced down over time, once they started figuring out what they could actually build on different parcels, down to approximately 10,500. And in doing that, and the reduction in those entitlements obviously triggered the need to relook at some of the development obligations that were in place at the time and provide kind of the correct, the impacts of those developments and changes to that development and what that meant to the development agreement. So there was a fully restated and amended development agreement that came forward in 2012. And one item that I want to address, because it's germane to what we're discussing this evening, is that it also included several provisions that the council was part of the council goals and the council interest to create a site in the Vistancia Commercial Core that was shovel-ready for our economic development interests in the city. So what that meant is that we had a provision there that allowed, that identified that when a end user, a targeted end user, was found, the city would put $6.7 million towards, or have in our capital improvement program, towards improvements related to getting the Vistancia Commercial Core, which is a 400-acre parcel, kind of be south of Lone Mountain, east of El Mirage Road, and then the 303 on the east side of it. That core was one of our key economic development parcels in the city, where we thought we had a real opportunity to work with the developer to try to market and find a dedicated end user or a number of end users to come and enter into the core. So we had set aside $6.7 million. Part of that agreement was that we would pay for the infrastructure to get it shovel-ready once we had a user in tow. And then we would both go out and work on getting the user. And as part of that, we also, the owner or the developer, would provide the city 50 acres of land within the core in order for us to use that as a tool to bring those targeted end users to the city. In 2015, we had to make a slight adjustment because we decided, we realized that just saying, "Get it to shovel-ready" wasn't good enough. We wanted to get it shovel-ready and make sure that it was ready to go. So as part of that agreement, we moved up the expenditure of the funds so that we could go ahead and get the space shovel-ready, and we had a five-year term on when we could go out and find a dedicated end user for the Vistancia Commercial Core. And if we didn't find a user, the terms allowed for us to get repaid, or it allowed us to extend for another three years. So what we are talking about this evening as part of the Second Amendment is that since, over the last two years, there's been a lot of changes as well that have occurred primarily in ownership with Vistancia, but also, they've come in and we've learned a lot, right? As the Vistancia Commercial Core continues to get closer and closer to being market-ready, we're looking to really kind of refine and define a little bit more clearly what some of those uses are that we'd like to see in the core and what some of those permitted, the character and the form and what that might look like as we go forward. So working very closely with the master developer, we have, we need a development agreement, we need to update the development agreement by assigning this to the new owners first. They need to be assigned to the obligations of the agreement. But then also, we are asking that we can extend that timeframe for their donation to the city for the 50 acres. We'd like to extend that timeframe, considering the environment, considering what we're working on, we'd like to extend that to 2030, which would be about another 10 years, plus an additional five years if needed by mutual agreement. So with that, we're also looking to get all of those PCD amendments, and they're not going to be coming to council because they're minor on the PCD side, but the development agreement, of course, is always in the council's purview and must be approved by the council any changes we make to the development agreement. So this is primarily to clean up the assignment to the new owners. It acknowledges the completed infrastructure and all of the things that we have completed already, and it extends the deadline date for the donation of 50 acres to 2030 with an additional five-year extension. And that's really the purpose of this Second Amendment. So with that, our staff recommendation is that council approves the assignment of and Second Amendment to the amended and restated Vistancia Development Agreement.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions? Okay, well, I appreciate that we are extending the donation of the 50 acres. I think that's critical for us. Hopefully, we will not have to have that go all the way out to 2030.
Understood. Got a lot of work to do, I guess.
Yes, but it's important that we maintain that 50 acres. So there being no further questions or comments, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, council, please vote. And it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. And item 38R is budget amendment, continuation of Robo-Ride Autonomous Vehicle Demonstration Project. Mr. Tyne.
Great, thank you, Mayor and council. And Peoria, of course, had worked on our first autonomous shuttle discussion, effort in February 2020 with the Robo-Ride program in the P-83 corridor. Of course, we all realize the project ended earlier than planned due to the pandemic, but of course, received very positive information, feedback, and press coverage in that short run. So with us, we have the interim Chief Financial Officer and also Acting Public Works Director in the past, which is Kevin Burke, to present some action to restart the program. And so I'll pass it over to Mr. Burke.
Thank you, Manager Tyne. Yes, I'm here tonight to talk about restarting Robo-Ride. This was our autonomous vehicle demonstration project that we were able to kick off last year. We were really in the middle of demonstrating some revolutionary smart city technology when this inconvenient global pandemic decided to interrupt that course and suspended our operation. So this presentation, we'll discuss a little bit about what that started, looked like, and how we can best complete the demonstration project. As you recall, we launched this in the P-83 area. This was chosen because it really represented a last-mile type of environment, and you hear that term a lot, first mile, last mile in the transit world, where you were looking at those environments where people are all coming because there's a common destination and then moving about that last mile to reach it. That made perfect sense in this area because of all the destinations that are visited on a regular basis. We launched in February. Unfortunately, we suspended 30 days later exactly, and the good news is, though, we did accomplish, we had over 725 rides and no incidents in that particular time period. More to the point, what did we learn? We learned some really neat stuff. One of the points, we kind of were expecting that the millennial generation would be the ones that were attracted to this technology. I think what we learned was it was a bit of a shoulder shrug to the millennials, yeah, this is just what the technology is in today's environment. It was more of a fascination to our baby boomer type generation, and I think they saw some of the opportunities for that technology and their use in their future. One of the other things that we learned, because we did do some survey work, was we had an 88% expressed high satisfaction with the vehicle's safety. Going into this demonstration project, there was a lot of questions about, is an autonomous vehicle safe and just were people feeling that? And so that was a very surprising and delightful response, that people did find the vehicle safe and really a greater comfort with that technology. Not as good was the vehicle's speed. We still had a 57% satisfaction rate, but the vehicle only traveled about 12 miles per hour. Now, we put it in an area that had a speed limit of 25, but the actual speed was usually less because you had speed humps in that area, you also had a lot of turning movements if people were going into restaurants and the movie theater, et cetera. And so that lower speed was suited, but even so, the 12 miles per hour stood out. So that was something that we were taking note. 94% said they'd ride again, and we mainly were attracting novelty riders. So the idea was that people came to see the technology, but they weren't riding it to get from point A to point B. So that was something that we kind of put inside and said, okay, what do we do with that? Adding to that, kind of what do we know? What's happened in this space, in this transit space in the intervening 14, 15 months? Certainly, the low-speed autonomous vehicle shuttles have kind of fallen into the category of microtransit. Now, our often hated co-microtransit items of scooters and e-bikes and things of that nature fall in there, but you, it definitely is an alternative when we look at this first-mile, last-mile area. It's also in the same group with some of the local ride hailing and ride sharing. But we also saw that ridership really grows up when you have points of origin and points of destination, and that's always been the intent. And that's always been the intention in the P-83 area, as more residential units are building up, the idea of connecting them from their point of origin to the point of destination without having to get into their car and go to this other location. That's always been the intention, and that's certainly seen as a good demographic, or a good characteristic of any area that you've run this. Autonomous vehicles have also been seen now more so as a resource for the mobility challenge. We've got a little example in the picture there, kind of hard to put your foot on the gas pedal with the boot, but, and here's an alternative for you. The other piece, certainly during coronavirus, no surprise that these were having great successes on medical campuses. So you put together, what did we learn? What did we know? And you get Robo-Ride Medical in Plaza del Rio. And this is really where we think is the best opportunity to complete this demonstration, is moving the project over to the Plaza del Rio area. We have a great number of destinations in this area. We have over 100 medical offices, ranging from a pharmacy, an urgent care, to Sonoran Quest Labs, to a very frequent, and unfortunately, cardiovascular clinic on the other side. But you add to that the destinations, we now have points of origin in this area. So I'm going to show you another map. It's not quite as crisp and clean, but it does have a good overhead view of what's going on in this area. So you can see in the blue boxes, we have a number of senior living complexes in this vicinity. Freedom Plaza alone has over 300 residents, Vista del Rio, and Casa del Rio, each about 150. So you're adding almost 600 potential riders that are going to destinations in that same area. You also have a high-end multifamily development in that, and I'll pronounce it wrong, Ocio, Ocho development, as well as 167 single-family units in between. And I want to stress that in-between, because it is all integrated. You've got destinations and points of origin scattered throughout this. That makes it really a promising area to do this kind of service. Now, the other thing that's evolved in the last 14, 15 months is the next iteration in autonomous vehicles. And so we've seen some technology jumps. We're still not at the point where it is entirely autonomous. It still requires an attendant, but I want to introduce to you Ollie 2.0. This is, the last vehicle was manufactured by a French company. This is actually manufactured by a company that is based in Chandler, Arizona, and right here. Not only do they produce 100% electric vehicle, but 70% of this vehicle is produced using a 3D printer. So it's pretty amazing technology. Still no steering wheel, still no pedals, but like I said, there is a full-time attendant that'll be on there assisting with those things, such as just orienting people to the technology, how it works, answering questions, helping those that may have mobility challenges, a wheelchair, walker, whatever it may be in this, to there. And then helping with any operational issues that may arise as we go through here. So that would be the vehicle. In terms of the activity, we would look to receive this vehicle in sometime, maybe August, September. We're still uncertain, as this is literally hot off the press, coming to us, it's going to be a brand-new vehicle. So the idea would be operating sometime starting in September, October, and going until March. It would run Monday through Saturday, six days a week, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Really thought the morning hours represented the best opportunity, since that's when people tend to go to the doctor. It's a six-hour charge, so that's really about the span that it can do in a single charge. It'd be free to ride. Unfortunately, it's not free overall, but we've got some really good structure for this project. The total budget for this, or the total cost, is $174,000. The great news is that we've picked up a partner in this process. As the manager was stating, we got some really good press. A little side story, my dad actually saw this in the Denver Post, cut it out and send it to me in the mail. I'm not sure who does that anymore, but he did, and there, there was definitely some expansive press. But in that press, MAGA actually called and said, hey, you know, we have this thing, this emerging technology program. We'd love to partner with you on this. We think this is great technology and right up our alley. And so he said, great, let's, we want to help us finish this demonstration? They said, sure, let's, how do we get in there? And can we extend it a little bit? So we're looking at a six-month demonstration project. They would pay the majority of it. There's still a $75,000 cost associated with it that Peoria would be responsible, but $20,000 of that is carryover from the first project. We didn't complete the whole project, we had some savings for it, we would carry it over. The other part would be some savings from operational savings that we experienced during this past year. The good and bad of COVID is we didn't spend as much money on transit. We had a number of cutbacks on our services, as well as you saw some pretty significant federal funds that came in that offset some of the expenditures that were anticipated. So what we were looking at was carrying over some of that savings, $55,000, from FY21 into FY22, and appropriating it for this use. I'll also mention, this is where Councilmember Dunn asked me the question of how would this compare to if we had used a Pogo unit to provide it? It's kind of a different project in that, you know, obviously, we're not looking for a long-term service that, at the most efficient cost, but in terms of cost, it would be, if you don't have to buy the vehicle, it would be about a third of the cost. If you do have to buy the vehicle, it'd be about the same cost. But you wouldn't get the match from MAGA, obviously, because of the technology. And, yeah, that's a big part. Oh, and the idea is to demonstrate the technology and figure out, is this something that we see in our future and should build into our master transit plan as we go forward? So those were good question and the thoughts associated with that. It would continue to be a contract with BEEP, that's who was the provider originally, and so they provide the permits, they provide the insurance, the attendance, the launch and monitoring. And so the action is requesting, again, the carryover and associated budget authority of the $55,000 for the project. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
I have a comment.
Yes, Councilmember Dunn?
Kevin, thank you for taking the time with me this afternoon on this, because at first I was very hesitant. And when you explained the program, and I do know that we have limited to hardly any public transportation, you know, in some of these areas, and the community that this serves, I think is, it is money well-spent, and I, it is only a six-month program, so I'm hoping that we continue to serve this community, because it is important that these people get to their doctor's appointments and to these other areas. So I appreciate the detail and the thought put into this, and I will be, you converted me from a no to a yes, so I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
I am also a supporter of Ollie here, and I think it's pretty amazing that it was, that most of it was done with a 3D printer. Wow, the technology is crazy, and it's just important for the city of Peoria to keep up with latest trends and technologies, because transportation is going to change drastically, you know, within the next 20 or 30 years. And we need to know how that's going to affect our city, how it's going to affect our citizens, what they are responsive to, what will meet their needs and what won't. So I'm a big supporter of this demonstration project to continue, and I think you picked the perfect location. And is it still going to go 12 miles an hour?
We're up to 15.
15 now? Okay, well, that'll probably be appropriate there.
We have, Mary, that's actually a very good question. We have made some accommodations so that this is not in the same exact travel lane as the vehicles. It'll be on the side there. We've got a terrific traffic engineering solution that will set us up on the side of it, that dedicates an area for it to run parallel to the travel lanes.
Good. I'm looking forward to hearing the data afterwards and find out what everyone thought about it. So thank you for that. And so, counsel, do we have a motion on item 38R?
So moved.
We have a motion to second. And it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is call to the public for non-agenda items. If you wish to address city council, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the speaker's podium. And we have received no speaker request forms. So we will now move on to reports from the city manager. Mr. Tyne?
Great, well, thank you, Mayor and council. And as we culminate with the formal council meetings for this period of time, we just wanted to say thank you. On behalf of staff, you have all provided us great information and given us plenty of summer projects to do. An example, that came from the discussions we had last Friday at our workshop, which really helped the city work together to decide how can we best align your goals and how can we help to implement and operationalize it. So great feedback that you provided at that. And also, I think probably important to mention, as we heard conversations tonight, with the Shire's decision that was put forward, this is a chance for all of us, every city in Arizona is going to be revisiting all of their development agreements to really assess, as the goalposts have changed, how we're going to specifically address those. Fortunately for Peoria, we believe we have very strong development agreements in place because we do incorporate performance-based clauses and clawbacks as well. What that means, for example, as we had mentioned tonight, we heard a little bit about the Modern Round Development Agreement. That specific item required a specific amount, employees required a specific amount of performance-based activities that go to that to receive funding. The result of that are really about two installments of about $30,000 and nothing in the last three years. So really, much less than what you see could be the potential, but that would only be if they had met what we had wanted as a city. So that's a perfect example where it's going to be very important for us to look closely, work with our city attorney, and make sure that we all are on solid ground, and we'll work very closely with all of our jurisdictions on that. So thank you. That is all I have.
Thank you for that. I just want to take a minute here because we did update our city management contract this evening, and that is a big deal for the city of Peoria. So bear with me here. For those of you who may be new to the council manager form of government, it is the most common form of local government in the Western United States. It's a perfectly synchronized method of balancing the vision and goals of the elected officials with the professional day-to-day management of the operations carried out by the city manager and his very talented staff. So this elected body, put in place by the residents of our city, sets the policies and goals, and then we hire a city manager to enact them. So tonight, we approved an update to the city manager's contract in response to an annual review of his performance. And Mr. Tyne has been with our city for 23 years now, is that right? 23? So when you look around this city, you will see his fingerprints on most of our prominent infrastructure projects, roads, parks, public safety services, and of course, fiscal stewardship. Jeff has incorporated the council's goals into everything he does. His achievements over the past year are a direct reflection of the council vision for the Peoria we want to be, including the completion of the Stadium Point Development Agreement, the Skunk Creek Trail, Paloma Park, art in more public places than ever before in the city of Peoria, a budget that was balanced and then rebalanced to reflect the projected and realized impacts of COVID-19, and very importantly, a giant leap forward on all of our water-assuredness for the future of our city. And all of this was during a global pandemic. Proof of an organization's competency is evident during a crisis. If systems and safeguards are not maintained during the good times, weaknesses will certainly be evident during the hard times, when we need them the most. When the pandemic hit, the city of Peoria did not fail. Not knowing the extent of COVID's reach, we immediately assessed our resources. We had the financial reserves in place to carry on the core functions our residents expect. We had the technology in place to convert a large portion of employees to remote work locations. We had strong management in place to guide frontline employees to new and necessary safety protocols. We had enough bandwidth to reach out, to help our business community and our vulnerable populations while continuing critical public safety and essential services. 2020 was a year like no other, and navigating through a global pandemic is an achievement that cannot be overstated. I am happy to say that we had the right person in place to manage through it. Mr. Tyne, thank you for a job well done. We appreciate everything that you did, and we are happy to have been able to renew your contract. Looking for 24 here. And with that, oh, Councilmember Hunt?
I wanted to just take a moment and say goodbye to Peoria fixture in Old Town for probably at least 40 years. For those of you that may not know, Mr. Joe Reed Puckett, who aged 73, passed away this week due to a traffic accident. And he was known by virtually everyone in Old Town Peoria. He visited every shop. Our newest shop is a coffee shop called 808. He already had established himself there. They called him Uncle Joe. He was that vagabond storyteller of old. He carried all the stories and all the secrets of Peoria past. He grew up in Peoria, was born right up the street here on 85th Avenue. He went through Peoria schools, graduated from Peoria High School. So to say that Joe is going to be missed is an understatement. He will be missed by so many people. So to his family and his friends, just know that he was loved and he will be missed. Good night, Joe.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.